Once we're, there you go.
Sorry, say that again.
And then, and then can you pull up the agenda on the screen?
Okay, I've got it up on our end. Do you want me to share my screen so you can see it too? Or are you good?
Uh, well, we have other online people. They probably would like to.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
Um, but yeah, Ben's gonna run the meeting today because I have to hop off just because it's it's budget crunch time for me. And every minute is worth his weight in gold. But I'll provide a bit of an update in a moment. Ben, do you want me to get us started or do you want to run things or what?
Oh, I'll run things in your absence, but you can get started.
Okay. On. I hereby begin this meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board. It is 3:05 PM on October 26th. Um, the agenda is light. I sent an email about that earlier. Really, the only substantive place of input and engagement today is, as Ben will point out, we are, one of the big things we were anticipating working on was an application for this, what was called Part B for the Rural County Grant Program. And they've now called the Rural Community Opportunity Grant. It turns out we're ineligible to apply this year because the balance of funds for last year projects has not been expensed, expended. And so we're moving forward with the project, but Ben is working with the city actually to make it happen. And we'd love for the city, for this body to consider the, consider putting together a, approving a letter of recommendation, a letter of support that Ben has drafted. So that'll be kind of the main discussion. I'm going to briefly go over a brief budget update process piece. And then I'm going to skeedaddle. So to get us started, are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or ex parte communication that members would like to, to share? Hearing none, are there any citizens to be heard? Hearing none, let's do introductions because I'm online. I'll do online first and then we'll send it on in person on the Economic Development Director for Grand County. Kelly? Kelly, can you, can you hear me?
Me, Kelly?
Yeah, maybe, maybe everybody knows each other. We don't need to do introductions, but for the sake of the minutes, everybody could just say.
I'm sorry. I was actually spaced out completely apparently. And I was like, Kelly's the Economic Development Director for, for Grand, for Grand County, whole and only. I'm Kelly Thornton. I'm with the Department of Workforce Services, at least I think I am at this moment.
There you go. Emily?
Y'all, I chair the County Planning Commission.
Awesome. Thanks, Emily. Karen? Well, Karen is a board member here, private sector rep. Chambers, Ben, if you can facilitate the circle.
Sure. And Ben, I'm economic development specialist. I'll pass it that way. Edab member, private sector. Robert Tosh, private sector member.
Jonathan Nuckin, Maritime Castle Valley.
Vigo Metzner, Moab, to one with Valley from Commissioner.
Many says talks of the economic development.
Please see some way to watch him or promise.
Elisa Martin, planning and zoning for the county.
Rob Walker, private member.
Mary Miranda, private commission.
Rachel Bartlett, fly whoa.
That's it in here.
Awesome. All right. I will just hop right in. Ben, can you stop sharing your screen so I can share my screen? Or you have to actually enable sharing.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, so to do the thing. All participants can share. Okay, give it a shot.
Sweet. Yep. All right. So mainly, I just wanted to share with y'all that the, the effort put forth in our last meeting to put together a version of this prioritized list of expenditures for the travel council to, to incorporate into their letter that they have to, to put together by statute for the budget process. And I just wanted to, to share back what that became. So, so they incorporated your recommendations.
Yeah. If you have the handout, actually for later. The thing August is talking about is just up there. That handouts for later. In case there's any confusion. Sorry, keep going.
No, you're good. Um, so I'm really just going to focus on this economic diversification piece of it. Um, so this is what is going to go to the county commission. Um, so of the slightly under a million dollars, that is one third of the three million, slightly under $3 million, which is 37% of our total TRT revenues. Um, these are the lists of priority, priorities that the travel council board is recommending you commission consider. Taking your input into that process. So number one is salaries and overhead for economic diversification activities within the economic development department. Number two, strategic planning. Number three is workforce development. Apprenticeship program and on the job training, workforce opportunity and needs analysis and education support. The STAR grant comes in next. I think the intention there was the STAR grant, we should continue it, but that there was a demonstrated need that a little bit more effort towards this kind of workforce development piece. Bump that up in terms of priority. The, the match for any of the rural county grant programs that we might need. On the business development side, continuing to fund the USU MOAB SBDC director position, which the county commission did sign an agreement to implement. We haven't, we haven't started that implementation process yet, but we have talked with Megan McCall at USU, get that ball rolling and we will continue to fund that going forward. And then within that, as was discussed before, you know, an entrepreneurial program, business mentorship and more basic business education programming that would be implemented by that body with the support of our office. Under that was additional department capacity to execute data research, content storytelling and program development, largely supporting Ben and his efforts to implement a lot of the programs that we're creating over on the side of the house with a specific call out to data and research needs as well as content storytelling needs. So what that looks like is what are the impacts of these programs? How do we tell the community about the effect of these programs? And also doing that in a way that is human, understandable, approachable, et cetera. As all too often, a spreadsheet of impact data is not going to wow or engage the average human being. And then lastly, there's kind of a ask in this focus of commercial space development that's mindful of water conservation. Whether that be some kind of an incubator space, have some kind of a commercial kitchen. And just in general, providing additional affordable commercial space to community at large. So where this all goes from, is there any questions on this? This is basically exactly what y'all put together about a month ago. With some small marginal moves by the other board.
August, can you clarify for the grant that we weren't able to be eligible for because we hadn't spent our funds this year? As you're looking across these projects, what's the risk of us? I mean, we want to manage the risk of going over, but we also want to manage the risk of going under. So we don't leave opportunities like that on the table. Are you thinking about them?
So that's not really a risk for TRT funds. For the Rural County Grant Part A funding, it's not really a risk either. We did just get our award for next year. Which Ben can speak to. But for that, for, are you asking like in general or specific to that type of program?
I'm asking in general, you know, as you're thinking about budgeting this, as you're looking ahead at, you know, staffing, for example, holding money back from community programs to support staffing, are you confident you're going to be able to fill those roles? You know, how are you managing the, the just risk in, in the budget as you're setting these priorities for the?
It's a really good question. Um, I think that the way, so the way that this process kind of works is, you know, we try, I try to put as much into programs as possible. And then if I get additional staff approved, I'll have to pare down some kind of program line in order to make that work. Because I'm not guaranteed any additional staff whatsoever. So that, that's a secondary process to the budget process or my initial budget request that has to go to the county commission. And then the county commission has to consider all of the new position requests. And how does that square within each of the department budgets? And they have to decide, you get a new person, you don't get a new person, et cetera. So I'm planning to basically maximize program funding and then I'll have to pare stuff down accordingly if I get the approval to hire new staff.
And you're confident with these programs that you'll be able to cover them with the staff that exists in the office?
Not entirely. And that's, I think, why we need to hire new staff. Workforce development, I think, is something that I would like to have us with someone who has some experience working with the high school and kind of other partners in the community on, on board so that we can build that out and do the same thing Ben has done for all the grant programs, which has been just a ton of capacity. But then that capacity, so if we're, if we want to do that, you know, I'm, I'm requesting a Vista, which I think should be no problem. But, you know, for workforce development, I think that would be a focus of a new staff person for business development. We are putting, we're hiring that new SBDC rep up at USU. And then I would say commercial space development is kind of pie in the sky next year. But I think that a lot of the strategic planning will indicate that that's a big priority and but I, I don't, my, my guess is that I don't, I'm, I'm not, I don't think we'll be able to do significant funds towards commercial space development 2023. But that it will be a big ask out of the strategic planning process next year. And that we'll, we'll, we'll probably have to put money towards having someone help us put together a capital stack to make something like that happen.
Cool. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, great question.
Um, August, I just have a question about priorities. It, it seems as item number A in many of these items is salaries and overhead for the departments. Is that an increase? I mean, I don't remember having this discussion. So I was just curious of what that entails.
The priority of that basically is just indicating that at least maintaining existing staffing levels. That's how the travel council board has worded that in the past. So just saying that, you know, need to ensure that the basic operations of the department is maintained before expanding. That's my understanding of, it, it doesn't prescribe a certain amount. It's just saying that like of utmost importance is the people who are working in the office, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
You know, I guess, just from a, from a language perspective, is it too late to change STAR grant to economic diversification grant? Because I, I know that after this round, there's probably some retooling we want to do. And I'd love to have the flexibility to change the name if that comes up.
This is, this is a non-binding document. So I think that the commission understands that STAR grant means programs similar to the program that we launched this year.
Perfect, thank you.
If anybody wants to attend and see the budget request, the Budget Advisory Board is a public board and does meet at 1:00 PM on Friday. And I will be there alongside a handful of people presenting that final budget request. Kelly?
Just, uh, just a question about workforce development. Do you have a sense of what that will entail or is that really putting it out there first? And because there, there are several things happening in, in the community that would support that. So just, just wondering if that's still formulating or?
I think it would be very similar to what we, the approach we had with childcare. It was identified as a priority. We did some community stakeholder engagement, roundtables, identify where the programs that already exist are, where the gaps are and how funding that we could turn into new programs would be effective to kind of connect all of the dots.
That makes sense.
Yep. So we, you know, I don't, I don't think we're coming into that with like a prescribe, prescription. It's more, this is a priority. Let's do some research, investigate and create some programs.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If I wait long enough, people will say something. So I'm going to, I'm going to say that that's good for now. I hope this has been useful. I'm going to go back to working on the budget. Ben's going to take over the meeting and discuss the Rural Community Opportunity Grant, the program that we're thinking about supporting via the city and answer. Any questions on that?
Well, thanks, August.
Yep. All right. I'm going to hop off now. Thanks so much, y'all.
All right. So now that we have done our presentations, if any, we are moving on to discussion and action items. So pretty short agenda today. If you haven't already grabbed one, I have a draft letter of support here. I've got more copies if you need one, just to let you know. So the, the background on this program is that it used to be called the Rural County Grant Part B program. So when the governor's office of economic opportunity created these dual programs, part A and part B in early 2021, the way, or in 2020, the way it worked was that rural counties are nearly insured that they'll get Part A. That's a much larger plot. You simply have to apply and show that you have an economic development advisory board that complies with the law and lay out your priorities. So as August said, we just received our $200,000 for fiscal year 2023 that aligned with the priorities that we set out for that year. And I'm happy to pull that up in reference to this if we want. But we got those $200,000. The Part B program, which is now called the Rural Community Opportunity Grant. I mean, it's opportunities. No, I think it's opportunity. So this is a competitive grant. It is originally was open just to rural counties in Utah. Is now open to municipalities with a population of less than 10,000 in those rural counties as well. And one of the reasons they did this, I suspect, was because they found that it was really hard to spend the amount of money they gave in just one year. So last year we applied for $600,000, which is the max award you can apply for, for the skyline arch development at Rio Crossing that Hossu is doing. Thirty-two units of affordable workforce restricted housing. We got the biggest grant award they gave out last year and it was $300,000. So big victory for us. This year, the pot is bigger. I can't remember what it is, but it's bigger. The applicant pool is also larger now because they've let in municipalities and whatnot. That being said, with all the grant contracts they handed out last year, they're on two-year terms. I suspect that most counties that got a sizable award, probably more than $100,000, haven't spent through their entire award. I was looking to kind of light a fire under Hossu's, but a few weeks ago, be like, hey, I need you to spend so we can apply to this. And then I reached out to the governor's office and they essentially said that even if we finished it, we probably weren't really eligible. And they want the projects to take the amount of time it needs, which I think is great. I don't want to rush Hossu on what they're doing. And I know that Ben is out on his honeymoon right now. So, you know, they're like a five-person operation. So things are inevitably a little slower over there now. So in the meantime, the governor's office let me know that municipalities like City Moab are eligible to apply this year. The award cap is still $600,000. Like I said, the pot is bigger. And so me, Rob and Kate at the Free Health Clinic were coming up with a proposal that we are going to bring to Edab and sort of discuss today because had it gone to the county, it would have required the approval of this board. Not that it's, now that it's not going to the county, it doesn't actually require this bias approval. So if we're not feeling it, then we don't have to support it. That being said, I would love for us to support it. I think it's a really exciting project that we're proposing. Yeah, so, so I can keep track.
Please.
The proposal we're going to make to the county found out it couldn't make because whatever. They're spending the money. So taking that proposal and taking it to the city and the city's going to run with it. Yeah, so essentially, exactly. So what's going on is that the city, you know, they're like, hey, this is great. We don't have the capacity to apply for this. If you want to do it, then we can be the pass through. Okay. So what, what? Do we get the money or do the city get the money? Or will the city take a marker and give us some money or how's that? So what I, what I think is assuming we win any amount, I think even if we don't win 600,000, I think it's probable that we'll win some amount. So what I think will happen then is that once we find out how much we win, our legal and their legal will draw up an MOU that essentially says, we're going to pass this over to Grand County to manage for the next two years. And then we would essentially act as if we won the funds and distribute it as we outlined, we would in the application. And yeah, I'm running point on the application for them. It's got to come from them. So it's just like logistical feat, but we're still doing all the work on it. And it's, I'm super excited they're helping to do it. I think it's awesome opportunity. Yeah. Us do it, but. Yeah. And then I think also it's, it's really nice because assuming these programs open the door hopefully in the future, Moab will have their own projects to build live forms beside. And hopefully we'll be done next year and have our project council get three years in a row or something. So anyways, so any other questions about like process and all that stuff, just knowing about the programs and all that?
Can you both apply at the same time if you've spent your money? So if you had spent, and the city could also apply at the same time.
Yes. Yeah. And I, I would think that if we were ever in that situation, it'd be good for the county and the state to get together and strategize. But if we have divergent, you know, priorities, that's also just how it is. But we're lucky, you know, the city, you know, they're pretty strapped right now. They've got a lot dealing with. So I think if we didn't apply for this on behalf of them, I don't know that they would. So, you know, I think it's a potential win for all of us. And the last thing I'll say about this grant is that, so in its original composition with the Part A and the Part B, the Part A is kind of meant to be more like a laundry list of economic development priorities. Even though the amount is smaller, it's closer to a guarantee. And it's an opportunity for us to show the governor's office of different priorities we're thinking about. We might not have the exact allocations fleshed out, but we want to spend 100,000 on workforce development, just like we were talking with Kelly. You know, we've got the idea and we're going to take the year to figure it out, the best way to do it. The Part B program, which is now called the Rural Community Opportunity Grant, that's more for flashier projects. The governor's office, you know, they want to kind of stick their brand on cool projects and rural communities if they see fit. So these are things that often involve infrastructure, things that could show, you know, their value pretty quickly, even if the project itself is going to take a little while. You know, stuff that's big and fun to see. A little less abstract, a little sexier. So on that note, last year we went for the Rio Crossing project and I think that was a good application. This year, Rob put this in my ear and then we went to the Free Health Clinic and they were done with it. And so before we look at the letter, do you want to kind of introduce like the project itself? Because we haven't really had like a formal discussion. I put it in an email. Yeah. Yeah, I think I can kind of do like an informal talk about the, the project because we have like formal things that you could read about what the plans are. Basically, Moab Free Health Clinic, I've been talking to them for like over years here and there, that they want eventually to have childcare or us there at their new campus, which if you guys probably all familiar with, but the old USU campus, it's like a $6 million total project for them, I believe, with like the purchase and renovations. And they are like going forward very quickly with the renovations. And I just expected that there really wasn't going to be much for us for a while. And then randomly, you know, a friend who worked there reached out and told me to meet with this woman Pam, who's like, she's technically a Vista, but she's sort of like a project manager. She's, you know, I think she's in her 50s. She works in executive capacity like target for a while. She's basically like retired and doing fun things. And she also has that same kind of like, she likes, you know, going quickly and doing things. So I toured the facility and she was like, well, what are, what could there be for childcare here? And, and she was kind of showing me the different buildings and where things were going to be. And, um, you know, it seemed like there was really no opportunity in the existing facilities and the renovation anywhere soon. The only option is the USGS area, but they're not moving out till like end of next year, like December. And then at the very end, you know, Kim, I think she was like, or I think I was like, what's that in that corner over there or something? And she's like, I want to show you that. It's like a quarter acre in the corner of the site. It's just like flat, it's grassy, it's fenced on three sides. It's behind the main building. You know, and I got, I guess I could be good, I don't have a picture, but anyways, it's a. Have you sent me? I sent you a picture. Okay, I can pull it up. If you want, but yeah, yeah. And so then saw this and she was in, and then, you know, Pam was even more optimistic than me. It was like, we, we can technically build a three-story building here. And I was like, yeah. And so I was like, how about we, you know, just put a manufactured building on it and we can have childcare in a few months on it. And so I ran it by the board and I was really surprised at how quickly everything went on their end. Given all they had threats going on. So I met with, you know, Vened and Doug, Vened, who's the chair of the board and like founder of the organization. And Doug, who's the executive director. And they all have like different personal stories about why they want childcare. The main one is what we're trying to do with this campus is they're, I think they're rebranding in the Moab Free Health Clinic as like a Moab Community Resource Center, I think is the order of work. And the idea is they're focusing on the social determinants of health, which I had to ask what that means. And it seems like, I was like, is it basically quality of life? She's like, yeah. Okay. So the idea being that we're, and this is like Governor Cox is one of his phrases. More than that, but that's, that's a good, that's a good foundation. That's how I understand it. So that's like, so if you, if there's more, tell me, because that's all I know. But the idea being is that, you know, let's take care of, of everybody. And so they're having all these different organizations there. And so they want childcare on, on the site. And, um, so as it's evolved, also I met, I've, I've been in touch with Head Start. Audrey Graham on my board like knows Carrie Aldrich, who runs Rural Head Start for all of rural areas in Utah. And, um, I talked to her about being a part of it. And then she was like, well, we have a manufactured building we're not using in Wellington. If you guys, you guys could have that if you wanted to. So I feel like, so I feel like we already have a building. And so the idea would be we'd have this like one double wide. And then depending on the funding, we may do a stick built other structure if we get the full $600,000. This, it's really going to be dependent on, big picture too. You know, this is, this is their project. This is going to be their buildings, their land. We're just going to help enable it. So how is this kind of tying into the other thing that we did with you on childcare to start the first capacity in? Yeah, this is, our mission is like, yeah, yeah, this is like, our mission is like, I mean, I think initially our mission got bigger last year when we were like, we're going to help existing providers besides just having this. But this is like totally smack dab. It's essentially what we did with synergy, which is, you know, we helped them set up a center out there. And we're like, you know, as a nonprofit, it's, it's easy for me to focus on the mission and be like, well, you know, the money's not going to us. Like, we don't need to own anything. This is your land. Be yours. We'll help you do it. And all we, you know, we don't need much from you at all. And so I think they really liked that idea because this has been actual, this will also help them in the future to get more grants for this, that phrase I mentioned, which allegedly there's like a new big grant they're going for. But this will feed into you in terms of here we have done to help build a capacity, more capacity of childcare in Moab. You can use that with the program you're using. Oh, yeah, the success we had. It's success. Yeah, the success we've had definitely helped us like, you know, make it easy to, when we talked with them and convince them, you know, like, when they were convinced right away. They're like, you know, you know, which is, which is cool. So depending on the funding we get, you know, they'll, you know, and, um, but it seems like right now, well, you already sort of have the land and then we have a building. It's been super recent. This is all like in the last two or three weeks. I don't have some information yet. So hopefully you have a great match. That'll be a great match for the grant. Get that all together by the time you submit. Oh, the match? Yeah. Use that for match. We're looking into what we can use for match. You can't use, I don't think you can use in, I don't think you can use in kind. They, they did away with in kind this year. But there's some other grants that we, you can use other grants. So it's possible we can get a, the Free Health Clinic is like. They've got some stuff.
But you're going for the full 600,000.
Sounds like it. Yeah.
And what all is that like to, to cover? The, the infrastructure of the, putting the building in and, and what?
Yeah, yeah. So. Yeah, yeah. So um, in terms of the fun thing, I mean, so it's, there's gonna be some infrastructure, but it's a flat site. I mean, the utilities have to split out. I mean, the fence could be improved a bit. Um, we want a playground right there. But also there's another area that's, there's a lot of blacktop on that site, as you guys probably know. In the back corner, um, there's an area that's like in the flood plain, which would be a good like playground area. Um, so um, if we got the whole amount, perhaps, you know, and, and again, this would be sort of like the Free Health Clinic's decision. Um, if they wanted to do this or how they wanted to spend the money, because I'm kind of trying to, at this point, sort of like I sort of got the ideas.
You're brokering this.
But, well, I mean, because what do we want? All we want out of it is a childcare center.
Exactly.
You know, and to exist. So.
Well, I just kind of wondered if that, like staffing and stuff, or how would that be covered?
Oh, we're gonna, yeah, we would handle the staffing and run the, the center.
Okay.
Yeah, we would. Yeah, yeah. We'd sign an agreement with them, just like we did with the church. But depending on, on the situation and, you know, one thing we can do is, um, if we get the full amount, I think we can also offer it to other childcare providers to say, if you wanna move out of your house, if you want a separate room or a new provider being able to say, you know, here's a way you could like, um, so that will have to, will flesh out, but I feel comfortable like being able to handle that. And I think they're good. Uh, we have to go one at a time.
Fine.
I was trying to like, can I talk twice? Same two notes at the same time?
What'd you say, Vika?
The age.
Yeah, um, so we haven't decided on the age. Most likely you'll have like multiple age areas. Um, we're still gonna focus on infants, but I'm sure we'll have room for, you know, a little bit older toddlers. So, yeah.
So I wish we had a photo. There's, there's an incredible amount of space. I mean, there's, there's room for, for two buildings and a playground to, you know, It's about decent childcare capacity.
Yeah, it's like ten thousand square feet for the area size, a sense for that. Um, and it's in a quiet area.
It's next to the USGS, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Right behind where, uh, they have a lot of that. They used to have the classrooms inside for USU.
Oh, is that what was in the corner there?
That is, well, the main USU was over here. Looking in that direction. Mainland was here and then Protestant Park and Lot was, you know, to the east of it was more right now it's being used by Horizon.
Correct.
And then, and then it's just south of that building. And it's a huge thing. So it's really set up. It's, this is really exciting. So I went and visited it and this was just like a dream that was gonna happen in five years, you know, or something. But it's jumping right now. It's just very exciting.
Yeah, it was kind of funny. I sort of almost like,
Just filling the place.
I literally almost didn't say anything, just said, well, just let us know when USGS moves out or something like that. But then it was like, what about this? And it's sort of, and then, then Ben talked about this. I just kind of figured like, oh, you know, maybe we'll see if we can, like, I think I called, I called him up right after. And then I didn't know about the, I forgot about the deadline. And so, yeah, everyone's been really supportive. It's like kind of been the thing. Um, and there's a lot of, so the idea will be that hopefully it'll be like our campus, the childcare campus and, um, yeah, I mean, we, we like where we're at with the church right now, but um, I think, yeah, it'll make sense to, there's a lot of synergy with like having a bunch of people to say, do the same thing, the same area, to like staffing and stuff like that. Cause one thing I've noticed with the childcare we're running is that, um, people have erratic requests for time. So that is, they're not in their like, it's not like a working day when people, seven thirty to five, everyone, some kids will come in at nine and then they'll leave at two. And it's like weird hours. So, um, there could be opportunities to like move staff around. That would make it more efficient from a cost perspective to do it. Cause it's tough to do it for infants for sure. Um, and I like that Moab Free Health Clinic is, you know, they're a well capitalized partner, I think. And so I gotta run the numbers more, but, um, you know, uh, we're gonna be providing them something significant. So, you know, the Moab Community Childcare. So, um,
Problem is it?
You might need them to help us.
Dill breaker. If you only get three hundred thousand, so six.
Oh, not at all. Then we would just do, so I think they're biased towards a stick built for, you know, I think they just, it's, you know, their land. If it was your land, what would you want, you know? And so money's there. So I think, and I'm, I'm completely comfortable with that since we have this manufactured building ready to go. So it'd be fine. Otherwise I wouldn't want to wait a year or a year plus. They have obviously good deals with all the, the contractors in town. But no, I mean, I've got some quotes on manufactured buildings and, um, the one that we would probably wanna go with would be sort of like two hundred seventy grand or something like that, which would be about two thousand square feet. Um, you know, and, uh, and also Head Start, Rural Head Start wants to be there separately. Um, just as a little background, Rural Head Start is another completely separate funding pool and, uh, for ultra low income, uh, people, I forget, the limit is, it's very low. It's something like thirty thousand dollars a year. But they are full and they have a waitlist in Moab, but they're only open for three to five year olds and they want a infant program, but they don't have the money to like get land in a building. So, um, yeah. So.
So Ben.
I gotta talk about it for a while. Yeah.
I'm sorry. So Ben, are we, are we just trying to go ahead and, and vote on the fact that we want to approve this project for the, for the city to apply for?
So, this is actually, it's, it's more of a formality. There's not really, there's nothing for us to approve unless we want to support the project with letter of support. And then, um, if we wanna do that, we can approve it as is. We can workshop it. Uh, you know, with the time we have today and then approve it. Um, the, you know, we're gonna push forward with this. And since it's coming from the city, it doesn't technically require this body to approve it anymore, but I think it would really help the project. So that's why I have the letter of support as an action item.
Um, okay. I, I haven't seen the letter. Um, but uh, yeah, I would, I'd like to go ahead. I mean, and if everyone who has read it feels good about it, I'd like to, I would like to have a letter of approval sent by this body.
Sure. So, yeah, so I've, I've attached the letter to the calendar invite if you wanna check it out.
Oh, I got it.
Send it to you also. Um, if folks have any, you know, there, there are small things that I, I drafted this twenty minutes before the meeting. So I've been doing other things. So it could probably be a little bit better. So if anyone wants to wordsmith it, um, or content smith it, either or. I'm glad to, or we can just approve it and go home at three forty-five. So it's up to you all.
Well, I would like to ask a couple of questions, Rob. Looks like he's really working very intensely on this project, the childcare. So I just wanna know the general information. How many approximately we have that potential kids needed childcare in town?
Yeah.
And what is the current one you built it up last year in the church one? Is it really fulfilled? And then do we still need it? And then how many more?
Yeah.
So there are some, uh, beside your organization, there are some couple of, I do know, like preschool places and then some other childcare places. Am I correct? So, so what is the numbers? Can you please inform us a little bit? Like, you know, what is the need exactly?
Yeah, yeah. I have, um, I, I'm, because I have, I have a quarterly impact.
Additionally, sorry to interrupt your words, but additionally, since for the last ten years, I don't see really too much population. Is that, it is not reflecting to our numbers or where these kids are coming from? I wanna know also that, you know, reality.
Yeah.
That's also interesting to me because.
Yeah. Okay. So, um, I'll have a formal update for you all soon. I'm gonna start. I've, I'm, I'm gonna, we're gonna do quarterly update impact reports about like what's been going on and, and stuff. Um, but I can kind of hit you with a bunch of numbers if you guys are interested. I love numbers. Most of us probably do. Um, okay. So, um, I'll give you a few. Right from that if you want. Um, so if they're your first question, a hundred kids are born at Moab Regional Hospital every year roughly.
So many. How many kids yearly?
A hundred.
That doesn't count the ones of our adoption.
I mean, it's a rough, it's a rough number. Yeah. I, I don't have great data on it, but like in terms of each, each grade level has about a hundred kids. Um, and so there's, um, about say six hundred or so kids, right, that are, um, you know, of the childcare age. So the other stat I saw recently is that, uh, ninety-one percent of mothers in Grand County work. And the number is sixty-two percent for the United States. And it's seventy-two percent for Utah. And Grand County's number ninety-one is the highest of a county in Utah. And, um, so, um, the estimated need is around four hundred sixty-five. Hard to know whether, we're, we're at about a hundred fifty. So another phrase would be like a childcare desert, which is like, so there's, call it like, you know, I don't know what that number is, twenty percent, twenty-five percent or something of, of, of the children. Let's see. Twenty percent of kids are enrolled in childcare right now. But then ninety percent of parents, mothers are working. So what's the other people doing? So there's a large need. The need is not kind of like, is not, um, it takes a while. One thing we've noticed is that, you know, we had forty people sign up on our waitlist, like, you know, we have like pretty quickly. Um, but a lot of those people have either dropped off or like hard to follow up with. Most people have different situations that are kind of like patched together that are working for them. Like things like they're splitting hours with their spouse or they have a job, like, like they have a job that's less than ideal for them. That's more flexible. So, um, a lot of it over time, because they think that childcare isn't available or it's too expensive for them. So there's a lot of education that has to be done around, um, you know, the subsidy eligibility. So that's a national problem too. About two million families are currently on childcare subsidies in the United States. Out of like a, a twelve and a half million that would be eligible for them. Um, so let's say, is there a need? Yeah, there's definitely a need. Um, uh, if we had a hundred spots tomorrow, would they be filled tomorrow? Of course not. No. Um, it would take us, I don't know what the time would be. Um, but one thing that our nonprofit's gonna be focusing a lot on, I think near term is gonna be, or in, in a longer term, is, is kind of advertising, you know, we helped qualify ten families for free childcare last month. You know, could you be next? And try to incentivize and have almost a person on our staff, whose sort of job is it? To get that word out and to get people to fill the application out. So, um,
But your organization basically that there's approximately four hundred and sixty slots and needed. And we're currently at about a hundred fifty slots. And so the difference is the unmet demand.
Correct.
And that's what this is, you're trying to additionally address with what you're doing. Now that unmet demand may be two hours a day, it may be two hours a week, it may be eight hours a day.
Yes, right.
But, but just sort of overall, it's a four hundred and sixty to a hundred and fifty slot.
Yeah, yeah. Most, most, every family is gonna be, it's gonna be, yeah, I think, I couldn't find data on, you know, like the, the ninety-one percent number of parents of mothers, but I couldn't find data about like the two parent households and things like that. But I think like it's probably fair to assume it's around, like, most people are, um, you know, are gonna be, both parents can be working somewhat is part time. So, yeah, you're right. So we're focused on full time.
Pretty compelling. And what you just gotta do is, is, is you bring slots on, online is fill them up. And let people know, kind of qualified so they can use it.
Yeah.
Because not all those people may qualify for subsidy. Maybe they all will, maybe none of them will, but.
And we have to create products as well, like that are tailored to different people. Like one great point you just made was that not everybody wants or needs full-time childcare. A lot of people are like attached to their babies and which understandably so. And they're like, well, I just wanna socialize her like for a few hours here and there. Or I work, you know, we would love to have like evening care or weekend, stuff like that. So we'll be able to do more of that over time. Um,
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna add a few things. Um, the, the first thing is that, that, that four hundred sixty-five number, it's, it's actually not something that Rob came up with. Um, it's workforce services. Right. It's actually, it was an assessment by workforce services on a capacity, you tell childcare system. And if people, people have a question about that number specifically, I would, I would toss to Kelly. And then just looking at the, um, the chat, um, Karen is eager to approve the letter and Emily added that in February twenty twenty, the childcare gap in Grand County was estimated at just over sixty percent. Meaning sixty percent of kids who potentially need care due to working parents and families who didn't have access to sufficient childcare. And Emily, can you remind me where that's from? Is that from that same assessment?
Yeah, that was the Department of Workforce Services too. Um, um, have some data. When the pandemic started, I was leading the childcare county communication task force and, um, it's, it continues to be an issue. And I'll just call out one other thing as somebody who recently had kids in daycare and still have friends who do. Um, you know, this doesn't take into consideration the strain or childcare facilities that are operating or currently under. I'm aware of at least two childcare providers who quite frankly haven't had a day off in months. Uh, they're struggling with staff, the wage pressure from the wage increases across town. You know, given an opportunity between caring for children for many hours and taking a job with less responsibility. You can imagine that, um, you know, people are leaving those roles. And so, um, you know, this is, this is, we're burning the candle from both ends. And of course, it ultimately affects the strength of our economy and our diversification efforts as well and, and the ability to upskill and, um, you know, pull, pull up everybody, you know, rising tides type, type thinking. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Rob, for all your work on this one. This is, this is huge.
Very exciting.
Yeah, Lacey, go ahead.
I actually think you answered it in both those things. So.
Okay, cool. Kind of like a suggestion, maybe on the letter?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please. Not that I really read really well, but, um, it would, it would seem to me that either in a, in a subject line, RE, nature of the proposal, childcare in Moab, whatever you wanna call it, right? Maybe, uh, and maybe in the first paragraph, it just says, this is what we want to do. So that as I'm reading it, okay, that's what we wanna do. Now, oh, you've been involved with us in the past. We've given you money. You had a great experience or having a great experience, et cetera, et cetera. And then ended out with, this is why the impact of this childcare, da, 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 da. But I think it would be better if it was just reoriented so that right out of a gate, I know what you're asking for.
Yeah.
And I know why. And that there's a compelling reason for it.
Perfect.
Very good English teacher stuff.
Yeah.
I was totally.
Yeah, that was, I think my comment was.
Maybe Sam's signposted a little, so it's, it's easier to scan.
The background of having the three hundred thousand dollars for Skyline Arch being like this very second sentence. I just feel like that kind of detracts a little bit from what the point of the support letter is. So maybe moving that part down to like a little bit later in the.
Very, very neat. It was just a, a reorientation, reorientation.
Right.
But I think it would read better and read quicker and.
Yeah.
Maybe be a little more compelling, especially since the millennials are gonna initially read this, don't know how to read. Uh, it might help.
I don't think we'll get any millennials reading this, but that's awesome. Maybe you could start with some phrase like, uh, you know, we're very concerned. We're very excited about the natural, you know, benefits throughout the community.
But we can, uh, we can approve the intent of the letter.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. I think you can do that, prove the intent of the letter.
Second.
Uh, first by Mary, second by Lacey. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you.
We're not voting now.
Yeah, I think everything.
I'm super confused. I'm not a voting member.
Okay, well.
Are you?
I don't know.
Those who voted, voted. Um, sorry.
I am for this. I think we can vote.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna work on this over the next week and everyone has the document. You're more than welcome to make comments. And I can send an update when I have those final like which revisions done. So you guys have your eyes on it again.
But don't let us slow you down.
Oh, I won't. This has to be done by November tenth. That's never gonna happen. So.
And I know you gotta go to the city and get them to approve everything.
Yes.
Well, they gotta submit their application.
Yes, they've submitted their application and they created a, the governor's office actually created a rather random process where since most municipalities don't have one of these boards, we have to go before the planning commission.
Um, to approve it.
So, yeah, so there you all.
That's so silly because they went, they had us establish this board.
Right.
So they shouldn't just have those people go through this board.
You know?
It's already in place.
It's not a bad idea, but you know, I, I'm just a bureaucrat advocating here, obviously. What can I say?
That's right.
Um, well, that is all we have on our agenda today. So, um, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, uh, if I have the power. Thank you all so much for showing up and giving me your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you all in line.
Thanks.
Hi, thank you.
Hi.
If anybody has questions on the amendment, the constitutional. Amendment, amendment they wanna make.
Oh, yes. Okay. I've already sealed my ballot, but, but thank you.
Well, and some of them are just, they say. Betty had to.
No, I'm to the point that I think you belong to a party.
Oh, cool.
But thank you.
I bet that one's just so exciting.
If you belong to a party and I haven't been invited, I'm a little pissed.